All our meeting to order. At this time, we'll ask that Mr. Simpson, would you leave us an invitation?
May we now, the grace of Father, we come once again and say thank you. Thank you for all that you have done for us today, Father God, that brought us to this point. Father God, we actually would look over the children of the home county and look over each individual that has something to do with the growing of our kids, Father God. The teachers, the parents, the grandparents, all of them have something to do, Father God. Our, our whole staff here at home county, the consolidated schools. Father God, we actually would lift us up, Father God, that we can come up from where we are, the higher heights. And Father, we just thank you for being so good and so kind. And Father, we just thank you for all that you have done for us. We just thank you so much, Father.
Amen. Thank you so much, Mr. Simpson, for that. So we're down to item two, adoption of the agenda.
Madam Chair.
Madam Chair.
I would like to make the motion for the adoption.
Okay.
Okay, I'd like to make the motion for the adoption of this.
Madam Chair. I have a question, uh, I have a question, Madam Chair.
Just a second, Mr. Simpson. Um, were you going to change this?
I would like to.
Just for that brief, I'm going to go on top.
Madam Chair, just a minute, second.
Okay. For that guy on the left second. Now, Mr. Simpson.
Madam Chair, um, four point three to four point seven. Um. Four point three to four point four. Uh, seven, six point one, and five, uh, seven and five. I would like to, uh.
So are you putting a motion on the floor to amend the agenda?
Yes, ma'am.
And, uh, are you to remove?
To remove. Yes.
Okay. The motion has been made by Mr. Simpson to, yeah, because Mr. To amend the agenda to remove item four point one, point three, to four point one, point seven. And to remove five point seven. And remove six point one. And remove seven point five. And then second by Mr. Anderson, all in favor? Opposed?
Opposed.
All in favor? And one opposed, so we have three eyes and one opposed. So now we are at item three, approval of minutes, uh, April eighth, well, twenty second, and May fifth, tenth, of two thousand twenty-one.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make the motion on the approval of minutes of April eighth, twelve, twenty second, and May fifth, tenth, twenty twenty-one.
It has been motioned by Mr. Horton and second by Mr. Anderson, that we approve the minutes of April eighth, twelve, twenty second, May fifth, and tenth, two thousand twenty-one. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So move. Okay, consensus agenda, number four, approval of consultant contractual agreement. Uh, number one, the consultant plus Rodney Washington. Um, number two, with the approval of the Holmes County Sheriff Department Professional Service. And number three, since it was, the other was moved, with the Smart Therapy LLC, Marvin Lee. Can we get a motion to approve?
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir, Mr. Horton.
Make, make the motion for the approval of the contract.
It's the motion by Mr. Horton and second by Mr. Simpson, that we approve the contract, consulting contractual agreement. Uh, the consulting plus Rodney Washington, approval Holmes County Sheriff Department Professional Service, and Smart Therapy LLC, Marvin Lee. All in favor? Any opposed? So move. Um, four point two, approval of memorandum of understanding. We have MAP, M A P S Head Start Partnership, M A P S Head Start Food Service Partnership, Jobs for Mississippi Grade, Boys and Girls Club of the Mississippi Delta, Mississippi State University Office of Clinical and Field-Based Instruction, Community Student Learning Center, Hope, Delta Hope, Community Student Learning Center Letter of Commitment, S E D S. Holmes Community College Dual Enrollment Program, and Life Health. Read your note. Can we get a motion to accept the memorandum of understanding?
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir, Mr. Horton.
I'd like to make the motion on approval, memo, you want to post it, Mr. Anderson.
It has been motioned by Mr. Horton and second by Mr. Simpson, that we approve all listed item one through nine. All in favor? Any opposed? So move. Budget and finance.
Yes, ma'am. Madam Chair, the first item, item five point one point one is the authority to advertise for hunting and fishing rights on section sixteen dash thirteen north, dash two east, which is sixty-six point seven-five acres. The district is seeking to advertise this property.
Okay. Mr. Horton, would you continue, and we got to go for all at one time?
Item five point two is the approval of a bid for modular units. We have one bid to come in, and we are asking that the board accept the one bid that came in for one of the modular units at William Sullivan Middle School. Item five point three, the authority to advertise for lawn services. The advertisement is listed in your board pack. Item five point four, authority to advertise for maintenance and janitorial supplies. This information is located in your board pack as well. Item five point five, this is the approval of vendor purchases. These purchases are being funded currently through our federal programs department. Per state purchasing guidelines, we must get approval for these items. Item five point six is the approval of the fixed asset deletions. These are items that are no longer in good use, and we're asking to delete these items from our fixed asset inventory. Item five point eight, approval of a monthly can, claims docket. And item five point nine, those financial reports that are given to you as information only.
Boy, you're getting on having a post-it, but we don't need it quite there.
Yes, of course, yes, of course. I can see that on the buses, listening to the whole thing. That's some addition.
There are some additions other, outside of the buses, yes, sir. There is some equipment listed there as well.
Uh, on the bid, Mr. Horton?
Yes, ma'am.
Are you going to open it?
The bid was actually opened, there was a committee that opened that bid on Tuesday. It was announced, uh, through the advertisement that the bid would be opened on Tuesday, and I will pull up the results from that bid process. And I apologize for my tardiness. Give me just a moment to find it. If you want to move forward, looking for that, Ms. Winters.
Do you have to pull it up, or are you?
I have it. I have it here. Yes, ma'am, I have it here now, so we can get it on the screen. Alright, so the bid here, uh, there was one unit that was bid on, that was unit three. The bid was one thousand two hundred fifty dollars. The, uh, specific individual was the A P L after-school program, and this was the highest bid on unit three.
Okay. So we have a motion. Can we get a motion to accept, uh, on the budget financing operation? Uh, number five, item one. Through C. And seven, and ten, we have seven, because, no, I'm sorry, eight, and nine, because that is a informational item. So can we get a motion for that to be approved? Yes, sir, Mr. Anderson.
Excuse me, Madam Chair. I apologize. Can you all please speak into the microphone?
Yes, sir, Mr. Anderson.
If I'm in order, moving to the true item five point one. Down to five, ten, eight.
Eight.
I mean, that we have.
In number?
Item five point one. And five point, and five point.
The motion has been made by Mr. Anderson and second by Mr. Simpson, that we approve our budget item one through six. And number eight, one approval sixteen section business. Authority to advertise hunting and fishing rights, section sixteen dash thirteen, unit dash two E dash sixty-six point seventy-five acres. Item number two, approval of bids of module units, if, from S V Marshall, two. Number three, authority to advertise for lawn service. Number four, authority to advertise for maintenance janitorial service. Number five, approval of vendors, vendor purchase. On the five, you have one, Howard Technology, two, C D W dot dash G, three, Synatic, uh, Dis Computers. Number four, Excel Learning Software. And then item six, approval of fixed asset deletion. And number eight, approval of monthly claims. All in favor? Any opposed? So move.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
You stay with that for a minute, but that's really slow, but that's beginning to march.
Yes, sir. Reading something. Thank you so much. Did you get that correction? Thank you so much, Mr. Horton. I tell you, we can get to reading it. They tricked something. Okay. We're down to academics. Approval to a teen, no, number two, academic, six point two. Can we get a motion for the approval of the twenty twenty-one extended school year summer celebration?
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir, Mr. Horton.
I'd like to make the motion for approval of the twenty twenty-one extended school year summer celebration, ma'am.
It's been motioned by Mr. Horton, second by Mr. Anderson. All in favor? Any opposed? So move. You move. Uh, item one, approval of the twenty twenty-one certified personnel, two, approval of twenty twenty-one classified personnel, three, approval of twenty twenty-one approved certified resignations. Number four, approval of twenty twenty-one approved classified resignations. And approval, number six, approval of twenty twenty-one, twenty-two certified personnel. Can we get a motion to approve?
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir, Mr. Anderson.
Second.
The motion has been made by Mr. Anderson and second by Mrs. Simpson, that we approve seven point one, two, three, four, and six. All in favor? Any opposed? So move. Superintendent Report, Mr. Horton.
Yes, ma'am, thank you so much, Ms. Winters. At this time, we will move to our PowerPoint for today. Yes, ma'am, we're going to go through the entire PowerPoint as well together. Signing the superintendent's report, recognition of staff and students, and state of the district report all together, yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. So we always like to go over our district goals. We always strive to ensure that we promote academic achievement, also to ensure that our talent, uh, is developed, also to ensure that we have a culture of safe schools. Also, we ensure that we promote family and community engagement, and also ensuring that we are physically prudent and have strong facilities management. Our staff and student recognition, we will be recognizing two students today from Durant Elementary School. These students participated in the Mississippi Bar Law Day twenty twenty-one Advancing the Rule of Law Now, twenty twenty-one Law Day Art Contest Winners. Those individuals are from Durant Elementary School. First place winner for a first grade entry, Ms. Morgan Smart. Also, another first place winner in third grade, Ms. Emery Stewart. And we congratulate these individuals on presenting information to the Mississippi Bar, and we are truly grateful for, uh, the opportunity to have this, um, talent in our district. So kudos to these two students. We would also like to recognize our high school robotics team. Holmes County Consolidated School District, led by Mr. Ravi Dut, Mr. Azim sponsored the only African-American male team at the twenty twenty-one Regional Marine Advanced Technical Education R O V, underwater robotic, robotic competition at Dolphin Island Sea Lab in Dolphin Island, Alabama. And this team competed, uh, amongst other teams. This was their first time competing. This team came in twelfth out of twenty-five teams. And understand, this was the only all-black team that participated. This was their first time competing. So we are truly grateful for the students at the high school. We're also truly grateful for Dr. Mayor's and her leadership, as she continues to lead, uh, in the area of science. But on this team, uh, we had two teams that competed, two twelfth grade students, Cameron Keys and Davy Power from the high school. We also had, uh, a team two, uh, Watavious Blandon and Labardrio Bridford. And these, uh, students all competed, they went down, and they represented Holmes County well. So kudos to our teams, kudos to our teachers, uh, and the principals and leadership here at the district for continuing to strive for excellence in everything that we do. These are a few pictures that were taken of the team and the time during the competition. Once again, we're truly grateful, uh, for the leadership of Mr. Dut, Mr. Azim, uh, Mr. Patrick and Dr. Mayor's at this time, making sure that our students are exposed to STEM and robotics. Uh, we are in a culture right now where, uh, students thrive on technology, so the more that we can put them in, uh, situations like this to be successful, the better off we'll all be as a community. We also want to recognize a couple of staff members today. We want to recognize Ms., uh, Dr. Rebecca Victor. Ms. Victor, uh, is our high school mathematics, mathematics department chair. She will be presenting at the twenty twenty-one Virtual Innovative Institute, which is sponsored by Mississippi State University. So kudos to Ms. Victor for her accomplishments. We all know that Ms. Victor was our teacher of the year last year, and she was the high school teacher of the year this year. So kudos to Ms. Victor. Also, one of our very own here at the district office, Dr. Felinda Travis, has been invited to participate in the M A P, E L A and Math Content Bias Review Meeting in the month of June. She will also serve as the High Quality Instructional Materials E L A Ambassador. Uh, and those workshops will be conducted throughout the months of May and June. So the information that, uh, Dr. Travis will learn and gain from these presentations, she will bring that information back to Holmes County, so that we can, uh, better develop our teachers and better prepare our students. So kudos to all of our staff and students of the month. Just to report out, we wanted to talk to you all tonight about budgets. Uh, we were going to talk about this information at our work session, but I understand the process that of five point one talks about the local board submitting an annual budget to the levying authority and the prescribed budgetary information to M D E by August fifteenth of each year. And you all recently, uh, approved the budget calendar, the budget preparation calendar. Once again, that May sixth session was designated to discuss, uh, law enrollment, legislative changes, additional budget requests, personnel, and areas of concern. So we will go through that information tonight. To note, we will be, uh, looking to advertise in the paper. We will be making advertisements for our upcoming budget hearings. Uh, the budget hearing will take place on June third, and we also will continue to present more information to the board about our upcoming twenty-one, twenty-two school year budget. Ad valorem, when we talk about ad valorem, those are taxes levied by a school district on the assessed value of real and personal property located within the school district. That within legal limits is the final authority in determining the amount to be raised for school purposes. So to give you an understanding of where we are in regards to the revenue that we've taken in so far this year and what we project to take in, so that you, uh, so that you'll know, so far, we have taken in through the months of October and April, we have taken in four million nine hundred seventy thousand four hundred sixty-three dollars and eighty-five cent. Throughout the months of April through September, we estimate, or we project that we will take in seven hundred forty-one thousand two hundred eighty-eight dollars and thirty-six cent. Or projected total revenue of five million seven hundred eleven thousand seven hundred fifty-two dollars and twenty-one cent. So, what we are going to be asking for, I know this is a little tight, but we will be asking for the same mileage that we asked for in the prior year. Our prior mileage rate was fifty-three point eight-two, and we will be requesting that same mileage. So there will not be a tax increase for the upcoming budget. We're seeking to, uh, keep the same mileage rate based on the assessed values, uh, from the property values here in Holmes County. So, to talk to you about the budget, we want to look at our enrollment numbers for this current year, and we're going to project out our enrollment for the upcoming year. So right now, the Holmes County Consolidated School District, based, based on month seven enrollment, has a total student population of two thousand seven hundred fifty-two students. Projected enrollment for the upcoming year, we're projected to actually lose sixteen students. Uh, for projected total enrollment of two thousand seven hundred thirty-six students. And you'll see how our campuses are fluctuating. You'll see that our high school is projected to grow by seventy-eight students. So there will need to be some, uh, adjustments made to our budgets based on our student enrollments. This chart gives you the staffing needs based on our projected enrollments. So when you look at across the board per grade level, uh, the numbers at the top, twenty-seven to one, twenty-seven to one, those are the minimum requirements as in regard to the teacher-student ratios at each grade level. And you'll see here, it's broken down by school, Durant, G P S V, Marshall Elementary, and William Dean Junior Elementary. These are our specific, uh, teachers needed per grade level at these specific schools. So this helps us project and prepare our budget for the upcoming year. This gives us a glimpse. This gives us a glimpse on how many teacher units we will need in each classroom, in each building, to ensure that our students have the required minimum in regards to teacher units. We also have projected needs for our secondary schools. SV Marshall Middle School is looking at 12 teacher units to cover the core subject areas and additional 10 teacher units to cover elective areas. William Sullivan, eight core teachers and six elective teachers. And the high school, 32 core teachers and 12 elective teachers. And that is not inclusive of counselors, librarians or exceptional education teachers. This number is only inclusive of our core teachers. Core teachers meaning those teachers that teach reading, English, math, science and social studies. So, giving you some updates in regard to some legislative changes. House Bill 633 requires MDE to implement a computer science curriculum. So, this is something that will need to be addressed and discussed as we prepare our upcoming budget. Also, House Bill 852, it increases the teachers and teacher assistant salaries. And I want you to understand that this increase has been funded by MDE. So, this is not something that's going to dramatically or drastically impact your budget because that funding comes directly from the Mississippi Department of Education. Then when we look at Senate Bill 2149, it provides that MDE will use ADA from the 1920 school year to calculate MAEP. They will use the attendance rates from that school year to calculate how much funding we will receive for the 2122 school year. So, just some additional budget requests. We have spoken with our school leaders as well as our district leaders. We have surveyed our buildings and seen the shape that they're in. We know that we're going to have to build AC units within our budget. We have some areas where we have some great needs for AC units, especially at SV Marshall. Those units were brought in when that building was built, and those units, both of them do need to be replaced. Also, we're looking to bring to you new salary formulas for our classified staff. Our classified staff have not had pay raises in a number of years. So, we are looking to address that concern for our classified staff. This is inclusive of our transportation employees, our food service employees and our maintenance staff. We definitely need to ensure that we are competitive with surrounding school districts in regard to our classified staff. Also, in regards to personnel, some concerns here at the high school will be moving to a four-by-four master schedule for the upcoming year. So, there will be a need for additional staffing at the high school. Also, we're also seeking to bolster the arts and music programs across the district. So, additional staffing will be needed. As you saw, we have some very talented students in this district. We want to make sure that we tap into that and bring in the best and brightest teachers to teach our students in regards to arts and the music. So, a couple of the area of concern, areas of concern. Our libraries have not been funded for a number of years, and this is something that will affect us in regards to our accountability standards. So, we need to make sure that we appropriately fund our libraries and build our libraries up where they need to be. Also, there, we are looking at the possibility of closing Durant. Last month, we talked about the structure of that building. That building was built in 1900. And there are some things that we can't do to fix that building. So, there is the possibility of closing Durant Elementary, students being housed at GPE and William Sullivan if the board approves. So, this is all something that is on the table, but that's only if the board approves and moves in that direction. Another area of concern, and I'm not sure if you can see this chart, but this was our projected MAEP calculations. And to note, when we reviewed our MAEP calculations, even with the waiver, there may still be a half a million dollar shortfall, shortfall to the 2122 school year budget. And I wanted to tell you all that on the front end so that you know and understand that even though there was that hold harmless because of ADA, there still may be a shortfall in regards to the budget, which is a little bit over half a million dollars. So, as you all consider the budget, these are just things for you to consider moving forward in regards to budget preparation. We will be bringing you more information boards so that you can make informed decisions about the upcoming 2122 school year budget. So, we will move on to the state of the district report. In regards to assessments, we are currently assessing students, map assessments that window will close on May 28th. And you'll see the percentage rates for each of our schools in regards to completion. Understand that those two schools that are right now below 95%, we are still working on bringing in those students that have not tested to ensure that we have 95% of our students test prior to the window closing. But kudos to those schools that have gone above and beyond to ensure that we have tested all of our students. Kudos to those schools that have tested above 95%. SV Marshall Middle and the high school. No, the window, the window is still open. Yes, ma'am. The window is still open. Yes, ma'am. And we're, we're still working to ensure that we get to that 95% at each of our buildings. But once again, kudos to those schools. I understand that we're in a pandemic. We are learning virtually. So, those schools went above and beyond to ensure that they brought our students in to test. Also, just a reminder to our parents who are listening, please make sure that you complete the 2122 Annual Needs Assessment of the Holmes County Consolidated School District. A link to this survey can be found on the district's website. Also, a reminder, this Saturday, May 15th is STEM Saturday. We will be bringing in students in third through eighth grade through our 21st Century Program, and they will be participating in this STEM event. And kudos once again to Dr. Mayers and her team for engaging our students. This particular event will be held at William Dean Junior Elementary School. Also, online registration for new students will open on May 24th. Kudos once again to Dr. Sargent and his team for ensuring that we get this information out so that if we have any new students in the district, specifically our kindergarten students, any rising kindergarten students, we will open online registration on May 24th. Also, tonight, you approved our summer school. So, this is our summer school information. We will have six modes of summer school or extended school year for our students. Our Summer Flight Recovery Camp, our 21st Century Acceleration Camp, Boys and Girls Club of the Mississippi Delta, ACT Acceleration Camp, MAP Proficiency Camp, and then our Extended School Year for our exceptional ed students. All of these programs will be available this summer for our students as they continue to grow and learn daily across the summer. Also, a couple more reminders, our P-16 Community Engagement Council Meeting will be held May 18th. Also, our board mandatory meeting with the School Boards Association will be held June 8th. Last but not least, want to remind everyone about graduation. Graduation this year will be held at the Frank Branch Coliseum on the campus of Holmes Community College. We will be allotting six tickets per graduate. And understand that this graduation will take place Friday, June 4th at 9 o'clock AM. So, kudos to all of our graduates, to our parents and our community. Kudos to you as we continue in ensuring the success of our students here in the school district. To add to that, students, this is a reminder, if you make a 20 on the ACT, you will be afforded the Dean Scholarship to Holmes Community College. That means that your tuition, your books will be paid free. This is for all students who meet the requirements of having an ACT score of 20 or greater. Make sure that they complete all admission requirements, that they qualify for in-state tuition. They must be a full-time student, and they must maintain a 3.0 GPA. But we want to make sure that students understand and know that this opportunity is available to go to college for free if they make a 20 on the ACT. One more additional reminder, board, the Southern Regional Leadership Conference will take place July 18th through the 20th. If any of you are interested, please make sure that you reach out to Ms. Bridford. And that concludes the superintendent's report.
Thank you so much, Ms. Thorpe, for all that information. Great information for our seniors. That is for the 20, that you can get a scholarship to Holmes Community College. Okay, thank you again, Ms. Thorpe, for that. Go down at item number nine, Board Report. And we're at the introduction of the new superintendent. Would you like to introduce?
You can. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Now. Oh, okay. I had to look. So, at this time, we want to introduce to you all the new superintendent of the Holmes Consolidated School District, Dr. Deborah Powell.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and to all of you all. This is a good time. I was told that I was supposed to just let you all know a little bit about me. What you need to know about me is why I came, and I think that would tell you everything about me. My daughter called me one day and told me, Mama, I'm going to be a mother. At the time, she was working full-time. She was working on her masters full-time. Her and Demarius had just purchased a house. He was investing into the armed services and he was going to the armed, armed services for basic training for six months. So, that meant that my daughter was going to be here a new mother and working on all those things. And as any good mother would do, I dropped everything and I hit the road and came to Mississippi. That's why I came to Holmes County. And while here, it was so funny, the former superintendent, Dr. Jay Sanderson, and I had worked in St. Louis Public Schools together. So, while here, I asked him for a letter of recommendation because he knew about the progress that I had been able to make at various schools. And so, he's writing this letter of recommendation and I'm checking, I say, do you know the superintendent in Jackson? Do you know this person? He goes, I, I'm acquainted with them and I'll talk to them. I said, thank you. And then one day, now this went on for months. And then one day, he called me, he goes, wait a minute. And I said, what? He said, you haven't gotten a record, a letter of recommendation from me, and you're trying to go to all these school districts. Don't you know that the children of Holmes County can use somebody who's highly qualified? And I said, well, you never said anything. He knew that I would start looking other places to come to Holmes County because he said the children needed what I could offer. That's why I came to Holmes County. And something amazing happened while I was here. I absolutely fell in love with the children and some of the people that I've had the opportunity to meet. So, when the panic dematerialized and everything happened, I stayed. For me, no longer needed me, but I just felt that I had some experience for the children of Holmes County, and I was in love and hooked by then. So, when the position came available for superintendent, I applied. And I cannot thank you all enough for your confidence. I appreciate that. We are just six people. I want the people to know, we're just six people. We will not move this district from its F status on up if you, the people, don't lock on with us to join us in what we're going to be doing. I'm excited. I know that we can do it, and I'm going to close with this. My late husband, the Frank Childers, he said this, and we had a broadcast station in East St. Louis. And he said, East St. Louis is like a pearl that is covered in mud, and we must wash that mud away and reveal the true beauty of our city. Well, I submit to you, Holmes County is like a pearl that is covered in mud, and we must wash that mud away and reveal the true beauty of our district. It will not get done if you don't work as a well-oiled machine. So, when we make the call, the states of us make the call to you, the community, please answer and bring your time, your talent and your energy here so that we can show the world that the children of Holmes County Consolidated School District is ready to compete with anybody that steps in front of them. Thank you all for receiving me, and I'm excited because I know we have some good people in this district, and we're going to make it work for our children. That's who I am. That's what I believe, and that's what we're going to do. Thank you all so very much. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Powell. And we as board welcome you to our district, and we look so forward to working with you. Anything we can do or if you need assistance from the board, we are here. Thank you so much. Okay, our next item, 9.2, is P-16 Council Report.
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Head, can you hear us?
I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am. Go ahead.
Okay, good evening. I bring you greetings this evening on behalf of the P-16 Council. Before I start my presentation, I ask you all to just give me a little attitude because this is our first time doing our presentation to the board. But, Mr. Thorpe, I want to thank you. I mean, I had to write this down because I wanted to thank you about your presentation where you said that this board is taking into consideration next school year to consider salary increases for your classified staff. And I know that they all would be very, very appreciative of that, particularly in the times that we in right now. So, I wanted to thank you on behalf of those bus drivers and on behalf of those cooks and everybody else that fall upon that classified category. Now, let me move on. The P-16 Council, I have my, our vice president that's on this line with me as well, Dr. Gray Washington. But just to breathe over me, the mission of the P-16 Council is to ensure that every child educated in the Holmes County Consolidated School District is afforded their highest level of academic achievement and is prepared to be a lifelong learner and responsible citizen equipped to meet the challenges of all future endeavors in a multicultural society and global economic system. Presently, we have five goals. We, one, collect data periodically from the school district that allows the council to examine the district's limitations. Two, make recommendations based upon assessment findings and best practices that intend to improve the quality of education in the community. Three, share data, information and policy ideas with the public, served by the Holmes County Consolidated School District. Four, promote strong unity between the students, the school and the community. And five, ensure transparency that facilitates community, that facilitates communication between the community and the school district. Now, this goes to the new superintendent and to the board on some of the expectations that we have. One, we need to nurture the students who want to be at Holmes County Consolidated School District. Effective schools have a warm climate. Effective schools have a warm client, uh climate where students feel welcome and know that the staff cares about them. Two, promote the highest expectation for the school teachers and the students. We want only the best, and only the best is good enough. Quality is expected, and nothing less is acceptable. We want dedicated teachers. We want effective discipline. Discipline should not be an issue. Students must respect others, and failure to do so cannot be tolerated. Student must understand school and classroom and expectations and adhere to them. When discipline is necessary, it's not vindictive, but just a consequence when a student does not do what is required. There should be a variety of technical uh instructional techniques. There should be individualized instructions and approaches to the students. Students' abilities and needs are different. To effectively teach all students, the school staff must understand this. Leadership, the building superintendent must have the respect of the students, the parents, and staff with vision, high expectations, and the ability to help others succeed. Our professors do not need to be micromanaged. They need support and confidence to run their own school without the district office standing over their shoulders. The superintendent and the board, this is directly to you. The entire district need a superintendent and a school board to run the state, federal guidelines as it applies to state and federal funds. We need qualified, embundished people managing Holmes County Consolidated School District funds. The Holmes County uh Consolidated Student with Disabilities cannot afford to be placed on the waiting list. Therefore, we ask you to re, to review your spend list and serve these kids accordingly. The school administrators need to run their own school and finances and be individually held accountable for everything that goes on on this school ground. The superintendent must have the skills to promote unity in the schools and not be a district bull. Failure to understand this will lead to multiple contracts not being filled next year. On behalf of the P sixteen council, we look forward to working with you all, however, as an individual citizen of the Holmes County community. The thoughts of Shelleyhead sometimes differ from the thoughts of the P sixteen council. So I'm at this point, I'm uh forced to operate in two hats. So with that being said, now to come from straight from president on to the superintendent and the board of educations. Over the last three years, the Holmes County Consolidated Staff, students, and Holmes County community have seen some pretty poor decisions made by this board. Over the past three years, we've lost highly qualified, educated staff. We turned a blind eye to many issues that were pointed out to you, only to have a state step in to take over our finances. Although there are several people in the district, now there are several people who in the, in the district that do have concern about how y'all went about selecting your superintendent. However, we know Dr. Powell did not hire herself. As a result of this, this board should know that in and all issue that concerns Holmes County Consolidated School District rests solely at your feet. Uh, we believe that this board, or some of the members of this board, are seriously considering bringing somebody to the district office that has already been in this district and has already lost certification to the state. I just want you all to know that we are watching and we are paying attention to everything you are doing. And I'm not saying this to be out of line, I'm saying it as a matter of fact.
Ms. Head.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, we're not going to talk about uh the superintendent. We will have open house, if you can come at that time and.
No, I have one final thing to say, and I'm not talking about your superintendent. I'm addressing this board from the standpoint of the public, and I only have one last thing to say, Ms. Winter.
You say it. We have to do it from the standpoint of P sixteen, not your current.
I am the P sixteen president, Ms. Winter. Please let us not do this again.
No, you say it from your standpoint, so we.
No, ma'am, I say it from the desk of the president.
We're just asking to be more courteous.
Yes, ma'am, I just say it from the desk of the president. I have one last thing to say. Finally, when choosing your administrators and staff, we ask for proven leaders who are qualified on day one. And as I stated earlier, we only want the best, and the best, only the best is good enough for us. The qualified is expected, and nothing left will be unacceptable. And on behalf of Holmes County citizens, I am speaking to this board to let you all know that we are concerned about the status of our school. And please make sure that any decisions that are being made are toward a better community for our children and the people that actually run the school district. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Head. Okay, let's move on. Approval, board report must approve MSBA board membership, uh board members, and we do need to act on that. So can we get a motion to approve MSBA board membership?
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir, Mr. Horton.
I'd like to make a motion to the board for the approval of MSBA membership.
It's the motion by Mr. Horton and seconded by Bishop Dean to approve the approval of MSBA's board membership. All in favor? Any opposed? Number four, approve of MSBA old policy subscription renewal. New policy, can we get a motion? Yes, sir, Mr. Anderson. It's the motion by Mr. Anderson and seconded by Mr. Horton, Mr. Simpson, that we approve the MSBA old policy subscription renewal. All in favor? Any opposed? So move. Approval, number five, approval of T S B A uh board book premiere subscription renewal. Yes, sir, Mr. Simpson. It's the motion by Mr. Simpson and seconded by Mr. Anderson that we are, the approval of the T S B A board book premiere subscription renewal. All in favor? Any opposed? So move. Number six, approval of board policy revision update. Item J Q O foster care. Motion? Yes, sir, Mr. Anderson. It's the motion by Mr. Anderson and seconded by Mr. Simpson that we approve the board policy revision update for policy J Q O foster care. All in favor? Any opposed? So move. Okay, number seven is FYI, MSBA mandatory training on June eight, Ms. Thor, I've already mentioned that, and MSBA board of ethics training. Now we are at item number ten is public comment, all public comments, you have three minutes. The board will not respond to you. But we will take under consideration. Is that Mr. Brown?
Hi, I'm Bill, this evening.
Hi, and how are you?
First, a quick question, I was under the impression that they was gonna be.
We are gonna plan a meet and greet where you will have question and answer session, but this is just the introduction of the new superintendent.
Just quickly, I mean, I'll be very brief, just several issues, two or three issues that I was concerned about. Um, what I was concerned about is, and you say you're not gonna respond and answer, but we're worried about dual credits and dual enrollments, are we doing that this year? That's gonna be implemented for the high school students this year?
Yes.
And one of the other things I weren't concerned about, what are we going to um teachers, new qualified teachers into the community? Uh, teachers standing, leaving, and they're not coming back, and what are we doing as a board and as a superintendent to try to entice new teachers to come into our community? And teach us, teach us, teach us. I heard you say earlier about uh the elementary school uh in building in the nineteen hundreds. I mean, I'm sure uh William Sullivan will accommodate those individuals and the monies and things that we utilize and have two schools, there's two less than a mile apart. I think the board need to careful to consider that. That needs to be something that needs to probably be put in place even before the new school year takes place. You know, you're talking about a school in the nineteen hundreds, you have William Sullivan. Also need to work well. Expenditures and things like that that have been spent just to keep a school that's a mile apart. And I had several other questions, that's why, because I was, I'm up here, because I was under the impression that that's what was gonna happen tonight, that's what I was telling, that we were doing, I was gonna have a question and answer session for the new superintendent. I had several uh questions I'm concerned. I'll be making another trip.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Brown. But we will be holding a meet and greet session and uh, you know, keep watch if you're gonna ever, put it out there in the paper, so if you want to be able to come out and have that chance. Thank you again, Mr. Brown, for that. Uh, at this time, uh can we get a motion to both consider going into executive session? Yes, sir, Mr. Simpson. A motion by Mr. Simpson to consider going into executive session and seconded by Mr. Anderson, all in favor? For personnel reasons, is that's what it is?
That's correct.
All in favor? Any opposed? So move. Now motion for executive session. Motion to go into executive session. Motion by Mr. Simpson and seconded by Bishop Dean that we go into executive session at this time. All in favor? Any opposed? So move.